Of the Mayor Making 2020. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the 2020 Annual Mayor Making Meeting. Due to the coronavirus causing self-isolation and no social gathering, this is why the meeting is being streamed on Zoom this morning. Unfortunately, there will be no civic reception after the meeting, but hopefully the new mayor will be able to organise something at a later date, if and when social gathering is allowed. Item one on the agenda is to elect the mayor for the 2020-21 municipal year. Do I have any nominations, please? councillor Gavishack.
Yes, I have a proposal. I propose councillor Ken Arlett, and if seconded, I will speak.
Do I have a second for that, please? councillor Michelle Thomas. Okay.
Yes, I'd like to second that motion.
Okay, thank you. Do you have any other nominations? No, okay. councillor Gavishack.
Thank you.
Sorry, Mr Mayor, can I point out Ian has raised his hand, councillor Clark.
So I never saw that. councillor Clark?
Yes, I would like to nominate councillor Thomas. As a new mayor.
Councillor Michelle Thomas?
Yes.
Okay, fine. Do you have a second for that? I don't see a seconder. Okay, any other nominations? councillor Gavishack, I'll go back to you again, this is a proposal.
Thank you, Chair. I am delighted to be able to propose that Ken Arlett, that councillor Ken Arlett continues in the office of mayor for the year 2020 to 2021. Clearly, we are in unprecedented times, and we have decided to make the decision to ask Ken, councillor Arlett, to continue for a further year. Henley-on-Thames is currently under lockdown with the clear message of social distancing, and we need a mayor with experience and great leadership skills to navigate the coming months. In the current climate, it would be unfair to hand over to somebody that has not been mayor before, because we need an experienced hand on the tiller. Recently, because of Covid-19, I have witnessed Ken at town, district and county level, quietly, behind the scenes, engaging with leaders and officers of the district and county councils to ensure that services to the residents of Henley continue. Councillor Kelly Hinton also, behind the scenes, has ensured that services continue and the vulnerable members of our community are looked after. Therefore, this is absolutely the time where continuity is most needed. Ken has shown that he has been a tremendous mayor for the last year. He has shown dedication, leadership, fairness and friendship to all residents, councillors and officers. He also has fantastic support from Dorothy, the Mayor S of Henley-on-Thames. Ken absolutely understands that councillors are elected to serve the people of Henley-on-Thames, and with a generosity of spirit, he gets things done. Never taking no for an answer and never accepting second best. He is prepared to listen to all residents, councillors and officers, and then make decisions. At some time in the future, the lockdown will ease, and we will have an enormous piece of work to get done. Sorry. At some time in the future, the lockdown will ease, and we will have an enormous piece of work to get Henley-on-Thames and the High Street back on its feet. We need Ken at this time to guide us wisely through the next few months. Therefore, I wish to propose councillor Ken Arlett as mayor 2021. I so propose.
Thank you councillor Gavishack for those kind words. Can I call on councillor Michelle Thomas, please?
Yes, thank you councillor Arlett. I'd just like to, well, first of all, say that I second the motion, and I agree with everything that councillor Gavishack has said so far. But I would just like to emphasise again that we are still in lockdown. We are still socially distancing. It is therefore in the best interest of the residents of Henley, all of the staff that we're responsible for, and the councillors, that councillor Arlett continue as mayor. This is the most practical solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak? councillor Hamilton.
I wouldn't normally speak to this proposal, but in this case I will. Henley is metaphorically on its knees. It is crying out for leadership from the town hall, working in partnership with local commerce and influencers. It needs an urgent roadmap for business rejuvenation, one for the staff to follow. Out of principle, I will not be supporting this proposal. I have never supported a mayor that wishes to stand a second term or consecutively. Surely, there must be someone new in HRG that wants to take up this honour and give the council fresh energy, leadership and impetus. I will be one of your biggest supporters if you get Henley to stand up from its knees in the coming year. Mr Mayor, I shall be monitoring your efforts with my usual zeal. I will never give up nor despair, and I will give credit where credit is due. However, the jury, the electorate, is still out, and I will leave this proposal as it is.
Thank you for your very kind words councillor Hamilton, I'll take those on board. Does anybody else wish to speak? No, okay. I will then put it to the vote that councillor Kay Arlett is elected as mayor for the municipal year 2020/21. All in favour, please? Okay, that's carried, thank you. It's now my duty to read the declaration of acceptance and sign as appropriate. I, Kenneth James Arlett, having been elected to the office of mayor of Henley-on-Thames Town Council, declare that I will take that office upon myself and will be duly and faithfully fulfil the duties of it according to the best of my judgement and ability. I will sign the declaration now. At this time of the meeting, the new mayor explains what they would like to see happen in their year as mayor. But as I am to continue for a further year, I would like to backtrack to the previous year. As I said at many functions that I attended, the two words I used most were 'thank you', and I intend to use these over the next five minutes. It has been a very interesting year, to say the least. The town clerk Janet Wheeler was seeing out her notice as she had taken up the vacant position as the town clerk of Didcot Town Council. Janet was only with us for a few more weeks, but did help councillors advertise for the position. From the beginning of June last year, I have to thank Kelly Hinton, councillor Kelly Hinton, for our organising skills in arranging the candidates for the interviews. We had seven excellent candidates, and this was cut down to four to come for interviews. It was a very long day, and I would like to take the opportunity of thanking all the interview panel for making an excellent decision in choosing Sheridan Jacklin Edward as our new town clerk. As Sheridan could not take up his position for two months, I would also like to thank Cath Adams and Liz Jones for the professional way they deputised for the position until Sheridan arrived. I would also like to thank two other senior management teams, Helen Barnett and Becky Walker. Since Sheridan's arrival, we have seen numerous town council policies updated, proposal for staff changes, which the council has agreed to, and generally, a more professional approach. Paperwork has decreased, the minutes have been reduced, even all the committee-coloured paperwork has gone to white. Sheridan somewhat reminds me of Brian Clough. When we have our weekly meeting, I choose a topic, he gives me his opinion, I give him mine, and we tend to agree to his. I think we get on pretty well together. When the town class position was decided, it was the most wonderful year for a mayor. Many civic functions, Henley Rory Gatter, lead-up to the Christmas festival, late-night shopping, so many Xmas dinners, and of course, who could forget those wonderful evenings with the Living Advent calendar so expertly organised by Richard Rodway. Into the new year, quietly calm, and then disruption with the coronavirus. Since early March, everything in my calendar has been cancelled, and it looks like this will continue for many months, maybe even into next year. We also had to cancel the annual town meeting for local organisations, where we listened to their achievements and they listened to the town council. The final part of my speech last year, when I became mayor, stated, 'Over the next four years, with the quality of councillors and staff we have on board, all of what I was proposing could be achieved.' Councillor's staff did not let me down either, and the new councillors really came on form. Thank you to all the new councillors that were elected. Experience counts for everything, and I particularly like to thank the chairman of the standing committees for their outstanding work and dedication throughout the year. I asked all the standing committee chairman to send me three projects that their committee had completed. I received double figures from most. The Recreation and Amenities councillor Kelly Hinton completed the many improvements to Northfield End, the new state-of-the-art playground at Freeman's Meadow, helped organise the Friends' Freedmans with local residents, reduced antisocial behaviour across Henley Town Council sites with the help of Police and Nomad. We won more Britain in Bloom awards than any other town in the region. Raised more money ever on the Christmas tree shredding. Kelly's email finished with, 'I do not have any more time right now, but we have six meaty ongoing projects for next year.' They also cover the planning committee, which I am chairman. This covers a number of working groups: climate emergency, neighbourhood plan review and the transport study. We have won two major appeals, planning appeals, on the youth club site and the hub by the Henley station. We have an excellent record with our observations on planning applications with SODC. We've implemented the 20 mile per hour zone, Grace Road's pedestrian crossing, gravel hill amongst other roads being partly reserved, ten-side bollards, particular monitoring in Grace Road. A number of these came to fruition thanks to our county councillor Stephen Gavishack. I'm convinced one day he will get the double yellow lines repainted on the bridge when he has five minutes. I think that one's for you councillor Hamilton. Thank you very much, Stephen, for all you've done. As for the climate emergency committee, a big thank you to local resident Tony Hoskins, who has expertly driven this committee since the declaration of a climate emergency by the town council. I will leave their achievements to next year, which will be many. The finance committee, chaired by councillor Ian Reisman. A review of the investments, these were above target, unfortunately going into the coronavirus. We've done a review of all town council policies. GDPR conformance, the Fair Mile contract has now been for sign. Staffing review has taken place, and once again, many items in the pipeline. Town and community chaired by councillor Sarah Miller. The repair cafe is ready to go. The long-awaited repair to the Bell Street pavement has taken place. Another fantastic late-night shopping. Plastic bottles have now disappeared from council meetings. Refurbishment of town council properties are still ongoing. I must thank all the residents who have been members of the Henley Town Council workgroups such as Britain in Bloom, Transport Study, Neighbourhood Plan, Climate Emergency and the Local Bus Group. I know it's unfair to name particular people, as there are so many people involved, but someone that stands out like a beacon is Patrick Fleming. Patrick's dedication and knowledge, I would suggest, is second to none. So thank you, Patrick. Special thank you, councillors Donna Crook and David Egerton. You phone me on a daily basis to let me know what is going on all over Henley. I'm amazed at the distance they travel in a day around Henley, especially Donna, who the majority of the time is on foot. Seriously, thank you both for your dedication to the town. My PA, Leena Wisely, who manages my diary and always seems to get me to the right place at the right time. Every Friday, I receive a diary of dates for the following week. Sadly, for the last two months, there has been absolutely nothing because of the coronavirus. I did ask Leena what diary dates were for the next three months, and the answer was nothing. So thank you, Leena, for your support over the year, and your bouquet of flowers will soon be on their way. Finally, to Dorothy. I have to say, at the start of the mayoral year, there was a little hesitation, given her three days' notice of being informed that she would become Mayor S again. But as we were so well-received wherever we went, she grew into the position, and I have to say, really enjoyed herself. Is that correct, Dorothy? Yes, that's correct. The only disappointment was having helped organise the mayor's civic dinner with Leena and then had the function cancelled when social distancing became the rule. Thank you, Dorothy, and another bouquet of flowers beyond the way to you. That was last year. The future. This will be next year. The first priority for the council, and I take on councillor Hamilton's points here, you must have read my notes. The first priority for the council would be to support all the shops in the town as best we can, once they reopen their doors. Helen Barnett, the town centre manager, has already helped to set up the Henley Basket, where people can buy online from local shops. Details are on the town council website. Myself, Stephen and Kelly are trying to persuade SODC to give a one-hour free parking for shoppers on all their car parks in the town, and this is still ongoing. We will need to put our energy into the local bus service and to get more people to use it. At present, it has been totally underused by residents. Work on this is currently taking place by the Bus Working Group. We will carry on working with OCC and SODC on the decriminalisation of on-street parking, so that Henley Town Council will act as an agent to enforce this in the future. Our local sports clubs and association in the town may well need to speak to the town councils for support. We will also need to support the River Rome Museum. All that said, income from the town council's car park, parking, buildings and investments will be down due to coronavirus. Tough decisions will need to be made to balance our books. We are all very fortunate to live in Henley-on-Thames, the jewel in the crown for South Oxfordshire. We need to keep it that way. As I previously stated, we have an excellent makeup of councillors and staff to get us through this torrid time, and I'm sure we will all have the energy to do this. Thank you for listening. Item two is the Mayor's Relief and Convalescence Fund, which you'll find on page three of your agenda. You'll see I've got a figure there of £2,413. What I'm proposing to do there is to get in touch with the three organisation, and if any of them needs any urgent finance backing, I will pass money on to them straight away. Unfortunately, as I said before, due to the civic function, civic dinner not taking place, that was going to be the biggest fundraiser of the year, so we've lost obviously money there. So I'm proposing to carry on with the three charities next year, which are the Henley School of Music, Nomad and Men Cap. Does anybody wish to speak to any of that? No, okay, thank you. Put in an extra item on, I think someone wishes to give a vote of thanks to the mayor for last year. So can I call on councillor Donna Crook, please?
Right, hang on a minute. I'm unmuted, but yes, okay. I'd like to thank Ken, along with his wife Dorothy, for being a fantastic mayor and Mayor S. Ken has been really hardworking and efficient in his role. Even last year, when we were canvassing, Ken had a great sense of humour, even when people kept getting him confused with Jeremy Corbyn. Ken has a great wealth of knowledge, and you can always approach him if there is something you don't know. He will always have the right answer. Throughout the year, Ken has raised a lot of money for his charities and smashed records at the Living Advent back in December. This is not the first time Ken has been mayor, but sadly, with this unprecedented times that we are living in, he has had to end the year virtually. I, the one, and I'm sure I speak for other councillors, have missed drinks in the mayor's parlour and Dot's fantastic spread that she puts on at the end of full council. The next mayor has a lot to live up to, so it seems right that we have Ken carry on as mayor with Dorothy to continue his good work, along with Dave and his wife Nicola carrying on as deputy mayor and Mayor S, who also has been working really hard and is a very visible figure in the town with his high-vis jacket, and also working particularly hard in lockdown, getting food to all those that need it. Thank you.
Thank you councillor Crook. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Hinton.
I'd like to second councillor Crook's proposal. Ken and Dorothy, supported by Dave and Nikki, have served Henley fantastically over the past year. Nobody could have predicted how this civic year would end, and in many ways, it's obviously a great shame, as we've had many events and special moments cancelled, while others, such as this meeting, have continued and moved online. It's quite something that Ken, with his limited tech skills, hosted our very first online council meeting. Those that know Ken and I well will know that we tend to disagree sometimes. But what I do know about Ken is that he is a loyal servant to this town and a strong leader. Along with his wife and his faithful deputy mayor, he has worked hard as our mayor, yet never stopped campaigning and working as a district and town councillor. For those reasons and many more, I'd like to second this proposal.
Okay, thank you councillor Hinton. Would anybody else wish to speak? No, okay. Could I take a vote for acceptance of the vote of thanks for the mayor, please? All in favour? Okay, I think I only see one against. Okay, thank you for that, thank you for your support, and thank you for the kind words. Thank you very much. Item three, apologies, I think we have a full house, town clerk?
Yes, we do, no apologies.
Okay, thank you. Item four is the election of deputy mayor for the ensuing year 2020/21. And I would like to propose councillor David Egerton from the chair. Do I have a second for that? councillor Reisman. Do I have any other nominations for deputy mayor? councillor Clark. So could you say that again?
I would like to propose councillor Hinton, as deputy mayor.
Councillor Hinton, okay. Do you have a second for that? No, we don't have a second for that. Any other nominations? Okay. Three years ago, when I was elected to the town council, I have to admit, I was probably one of the very few people in Henley that did not know councillor David Egerton that well. I found councillor Egerton, shall I say, a very frustrated man, as he could not get things done quickly enough. I could see where he was coming from. As being self-employed myself, you make a decision, you get on with it. Unfortunately, councils do not work that way. The longer the year went on, the more frustrated he seemed to get. This trend continued into the second year. What came out was councillor Egerton's love of the town and how he wanted to see parts refurbished to their original standard. I spent a lot of time with councillor Egerton, making up lists on refurbishments that needed carrying out by Henley Town Council, South Oxford District Council and also Oxfordshire County Council. When I was offered the position of mayor last year, I needed someone I could rely on. There were plenty of possible candidates available, but I proposed councillor Egerton, and by an excellent choice, that came to be. Councillor Egerton has excelled himself as deputy mayor, along with Nikki as his deputy Mayor S. He has been excellent when deputising on functions for me. He has carried out his duties exceptionally well. It is my pleasure to propose that councillor David Egerton for the deputy mayor for a second term. councillor Reisman.
Yeah, I'm delighted to second the proposal that councillor Egerton be elected, elected deputy mayor for 2020/21. Dave's been in the role now for the last 12 months, and we are all able to see how Dave commits himself totally to the job of deputy mayor. Dave's approach is one of getting stuck in, and we all know that Dave cares deeply about things being done right, and he likes to tell us if they're not. But the important thing is that Dave not just talks about things that aren't right, he goes out and gets them sorted himself. He's got a very hands-on approach. He goes out and gets the job done. Like Ken, Dave seems to know everyone in Henley. On VE Day, I was working out in my front garden, and Dave walked past. He was in his full 1945 police officer's uniform. He'd got the cork helmet, the whistle, the tranche and the lot. He wants to know where my Union Jack was. But we chatted for a while, and everyone that walked past, whether they were walking their dog or driving in their car, they stopped to wave and say hello. Hello, Dave. They all knew who Dave was. He's a very popular and well-known figure in the town. He's very visible, literally, in his high-vis vest. And he also gets on with things behind the scenes, discreetly helping people and making the town a better place. It's something that matters a lot to Dave. As deputy, Dave has worked very well with Ken as mayor. They get on and respect each other. They're a great team for Henley, and will do a great job facing up to the challenges that face the town in the future once this crisis is over. Dave Egerton, I'm happy to propose the man for the job as deputy mayor for next year.
Thank you councillor Reisman. Does anybody else wish to speak? No, okay. All in favour of councillor David Egerton, sorry, John Hooper, sorry. Oh, hold on. I thought you wanted to speak. Okay. All in favour of councillor David Egerton becoming deputy mayor for the ensuing year? All in favour? I think that's 15 you've got support from Dave. Congratulations, and I look forward to working with you for the ensuing year, Dave. Thank you very much for all you do for Henley. Thank you. Item five on the agenda is the appointment of standing committees. These are on page five of your agenda. The Henley Residents Group have agreed with all these, I believe the Conservatives have as well. Not sure about the independent. I think we have. Okay, well, someone like to propose that we accept the committees for 2020/21. Councillor Lambert, seconded by councillor Hamilton. Do you wish to speak, councillor Hamilton? councillor Hamilton, do you wish to speak?
Yes. On the standing committees, we have two and a half, we do two and a half committees.
Yes, right. Um, on the standing committees, um, we have two and a half, we do two and a half committees each, myself and Lawrence Plant. So I emailed the town clerk this morning, uh, the, uh, on planning, it should say Lawrence Plant, stroke or Anthony Dan, Will Hamilton. We do two and a half committees each.
Okay, I'm not sure.
I so propose.
Okay, let me just, can I just check that with the town clerk? I think personally, I think it's easy if we just have a substitute. Or are you happy to go along with councillor Hamilton's proposal?
Um, I'm not aware of any sharing of any role. Um, it would make it very difficult to administer. Um, certainly the, uh, the process at the moment is that if the regular member is unable to attend, uh, then they are able to appoint a substitute. Um, and so I'm not aware of, of any alternative arrangements.
Okay, so we've got a proposal to accept the committees as on page five and that was seconded. Can we take a vote, all in favour of that please? That's carried. Thank you. Item six, the appointment of representatives to the outside bodies. You have a list on page twenty three. We just need someone to go on the Henley Youth Festival. Councillor Plant, we were told that you would be very interested in that. Yeah, okay, thank you. I've got the thumbs up there. Thank you. So other than that, if we put councillor plant on the Henley Youth Festival, I'd propose that we accept those other ones as written. Do I have a second for that? Councillor Hooper, okay, all in favour? Well, that was unanimous. Well done. I have nothing else on the agenda this, uh, today, town clerk. I'm not sure about you. No, okay. Can I thank all the councillors for attending? And anybody that's watched it on, on YouTube today, thank you very much for logging into that. Uh, that is now the end of the meeting. As I say, it's unfortunate there will be no reception, but hopefully sometime maybe the end of the year or beginning of next year, uh, when we get this dreaded virus out the way, uh, I can organise something there. So thank you for everybody attending and I look forward to seeing councillors at the forthcoming council meetings.